I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as Steve Cagle from Lodge Church leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we want to thank you so much for your many blessings on this community. We thank you so much for how you've opened doors for us to enjoy the time of the season and all, and we thank you, Father, for the opportunity to make decisions that benefit the people of the community tonight. Pray that you'll give wisdom to every man and woman in this room to help them to do that, that will honor everyone in the town, and we ask in Jesus's name.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Ms. Lively? Denise? Mr. Woodham?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Mr. Broderick? Mr. Brock? Mr. Piercy?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. Public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Is there anyone? No, I'm sorry. Thank you, that's mine. Remote participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comments by email, voicemail, or through web conferences. Is there anyone online, Maura? Jill has an email to read.
I'm reading this from resident Melissa Hendrian, Hendren, not sure about the pronunciation there. I apologize I am not able to attend, but thank you for considering my comments. I have two points that I'd like to raise for discussion prior to the approval of the 2024 budget. My first concern is the $6 million for Robert Burke Park slash Freedom Park. City Council previously approved the Burke Park master plan. The first phase was estimated to cost $1.2 million and was estimated to take 1.5 to two years to complete. The master plan identified a number of funding sources from state and federal grants for the first phase specifically, and $600,000 was already included in the 2023 budget. There are also phases two, three, and four that will also take one and a half to two years each to complete and will cost a total amount of $2.2 million. Without additional grants, the entire remaining costs of Burke Park over the next six years is projected to be $2.8 million. For Freedom Park, the conceptual cost estimate from the master plan was $1.6 million, and it's notable that this plan was created without any input from residents of Monticello. In September 2022, there was an ordinance approved with the note that, in quotations, "this ordinance is approving the plan, not money spent." The total cost for both parks over the next six-plus years should be $4.4 million. In the 2024 budget proposal, the Burke slash Freedom Park line item includes $6 million, a $4 million bond paid over seven years, 1.5 million from existing reserves, and $500,000 from gaming revenues. However, the total projected cost is only $4.4 million, so I am having trouble understanding why there would be $6 million in the FY 2024 budget for Burke and Freedom Parks. Furthermore, if Monticello intends to support Overheim Park in the next seven years before the Burke Freedom Park is fully paid for, this seems especially unwise. My second concern is the seemingly rubber stamp approval of a property tax levy increase of 4.9%, just under the amount that requires you to advertise and hold a public hearing. The city has passed a 4.9% increase each year since 2015. I believe this merits significant discussion on why the city has continued to increase this tax levy for eight years and whether this is truly necessary for a ninth year. There was an existing surplus, $1.4 million, in the general fund last year, in addition to $2.6 million in general fund revenue over expenditures through October 2023, a running surplus of $4 million. However, in the summary budget up for approval tonight, including the questionable $4 million bond revenue for the Burke slash Freedom, the 2024 budget is proposed to have a negative general fund of $2.4 million for 2024. I would hope that these points will give you pause and allow for discourse and discussion whether this is the best path forward for Monticello residents.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report. Claims dated November 28, 2023 through December 11, 2023. Meeting minutes. City Council meeting minutes, November 27, 2023. City Council study session meeting minutes, November 6, 2023. Permit report, November 2023. Police report, November 2023. Fire report, November 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report. Monday, December 4, 2023, 3:50 p.m. Dear Mayor Stoner, I am writing to you today to tender my resignation from my ward to Monticello City Council position. Since my shop, JD's Fishing, closed this past October, I have been searching for other employment. I am currently looking at an opportunity that, if selected for this post, could possibly pose a conflict of interest. Therefore, to eliminate any possible appearance of conflict, I am resigning from my council position. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time on City Council and working with you and the other council members over these past several months. I hope to be able to serve our Monticello community in other ways in the future. Best regards, John Denise. Continuing the mayor's report, some upcoming events. Spend the last Friday before Christmas in downtown Monticello at candles and carols. Shops will be open late till 8:00. There are brides around downtown and a caroling sing-along on the square. Everyone is invited to downtown Monticello from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Friday, December the 22nd. Fana will be at the depot December 15th through 23rd. Visit the Monticello area chamber website for times. Holiday Glow, a one-mile lighted walk through the Allerton Gardens is going on daily through December 23rd and selected later dates. Don't forget to support your local businesses. So that's my report this evening. Moving on, new business. Cancellation of December 27, 2023 City Council meeting, motion only. Is there a motion to cancel the December 27 meeting?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I just want to note this would be contingent on budget passing. Otherwise, we'd have a meeting to...
Yes, Mike, yes. Let's have a vote.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively? Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2023-66 on ordinance amending title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances Concerning Class B Liquor Licenses. Callie Jo.
Thank you, Mayor. Todd and Rhonda Thornton, house property down on West Washington Street. They received a conditional use last year to allow mixed-use occupancy. Some of you remember they're turning the upper story into a short-term rental, and at the time they were thinking retail for the first floor. They have come up with the idea of like wanting to open a speakeasy-themed bar on the first floor with bourbon wine, specialty cocktails, and a few beer options, as well as a couple of gaming machines. So before they go through the zoning and expense associated with that and the remodeling process, they are requesting creation of an additional liquor license, since all Class B liquor licenses have been filled. The Class B, we have six of those, that's to sell alcohol by the drink for consumption on site. The approval of this would be contingent upon the zoning as well, so if the zoning down the road is not approved, and that will be in January, then this would become null and void.
Thank you.
If approved.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-66 on ordinance amending title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances Concerning Class B Liquor Licenses?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just curious if they shared why they wanted to change from the retail space to the tavern.
Have they online, Maura? Okay, Todd, can you hear us? Ask the applicant, then.
Yeah, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, could you hear Alderman Vogt's question on that?
Yeah, what had happened on that is that there's been significant changes throughout the whole process of the whole renovation process, and the speakeasy thought came whenever we could decide to use the basement as a, as the place for the, for the speakeasy. So basically, I went through a lot of the different channels and went to the health department, and then all fingers usually, or they all pointed to Larry Luca, the Illinois State Plumbing Inspector. You know, if I could get by him and do the, all the ADA, you know, the bathrooms, the ramp, everything to go into the building, then I got a, I got a green light from him on everything. And so that's why it really changed from the retail initially, because we never really had anything that we wanted to do on retail. We just wanted to do mixed use, because we didn't want to use the whole, the whole house for just an Airbnb.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I do have one question. It may or may not be related to this. Our family has, has gone through this mixed-use option, and I know that there's, there are heavy requirements for firewalls to be put up between the mixed use, especially since there's going to be people that sleep, sleeping there, and I want to make sure that you've looked into that and make sure we can get all that approved, because you have to put a firewall in between.
Yeah, that was one of the things that Larry had actually brought up, even though he's not, I mean, he gave me a full, thorough thought on everything, even though some things weren't even in his realm of, of what he would have to pass for himself, but he did talk about that, but since we wouldn't be doing, he was, he felt proper about everything, since we're not going to be doing any cooking, have any equipment of that sort, that it would not be as much of an issue as if we were to do, you know, do, offer cooking and things like that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you've looked into that, because I know that that can be pretty expensive if you have to do that.
Certainly, certainly, yeah. I've been trying to cover all my bases as we've, as we've gone, and I'm trying to do them ahead of time, of course, to, of course, cost is a huge, you know, a huge concern.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the approximate square use of the space that you would use for this?
For the speakeasy part?
Yes.
The approximate square footage for that is right around, it's right around 1,100 square feet.
Anyone else? We have a motion, right?
We do, and a second.
And a second. Any more comments or questions? If not, I would like a roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
No.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Burris?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
No.
And Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Three, four yeses, and three noes. Motion passes. So now I'm missing someone. One, two, three, four. There's a tie.
Oh, the mayor gets to vote.
Yes, there are eight of us, yes.
The mayor gets to vote.
Yes, because let me just double check.
Yeah.
Vogt, Woodham, Kuhn, Piercy were yes, correct?
Yes.
Everyone? And then Reed, Lively, Burris, Brock.
That's correct.
Making sure, yep.
The mayor votes aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Moving on to ordinance 2023-67, an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Monticello, Payette County, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2024 and ending on December 31, 2024. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo, if it's okay with you, I'll just briefly describe...
That's fine.
Each of the tax levies.
That's fine.
And then you can put them up for discussion at each one if so desired. So in accordance with the truth and taxation law, the City Council approved an estimated tax levy at the November 13 City Council meeting. You were also presented at that meeting with a draft copy of the property tax levy ordinance, and were informed that these items would appear before you at tonight's meeting. Proposed FY 2024 budget does include a 4.9% increase in the property tax revenues. Ordinance 2023-68 and 2023-69 dealing with the special service areas. The SSA III, Sage Meadows, was established by 2017-48, and SSA IV, Walden Pond, was established by ordinance 2017-49. Special Service Area III and IV tax levies will be established at the maximum amount of 50 cents per $100 of equalized assessed value for each lot located in each subject territory respectfully. SSA III and SSA IV are in effect through fiscal year 2038. It is recommended City Council approve ordinance 2023-67, approving property tax levy. Ordinance 2023-68 approving the SSA III tax levy, and ordinance 2023-69 approving the SSA IV tax levy as presented.
Are there any comments or questions of Mr. Summers? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-67 and ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Monticello, Payette County, Illinois, for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2024 and ending on December 31, 2024?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2023-68, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of a tax for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2024, ending on December 31, 2024, for special service area number three of the city of Monticello, Payette County, Illinois. Do you have anything to add to what you've already said, Terry?
No, they, these were set back in...
I've talked about them a long time ago, so it's nothing, it's nothing that not everyone has known. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-68?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
And Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2023-69, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of a tax for the fiscal year commencing on January 1, 2024, ending on December 31, 2024, for special service area number four of the city of Monticello, Payette County, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve this?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? I think Terry addressed everything, it was just like three. Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2023-70, a resolution of the City Council, of the city of Monticello, approving the, of the city budget for fiscal year 2024. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of reiterating where we've come from, from, for this year. Budget discussions commenced at the committee level during the week of September 25, comprising of City Council members, City Finance Director, and myself. The budget study session was conducted November 6. During the City Council meeting November 13, the City Council passed the Truth and Taxation Law Resolution with an estimated corporate and special purpose property tax increase of 4.9%. Council will be asked to approve ordinance 2023-70 at the meeting levy, meeting levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city commencing January 1. We went over that a little bit ago. The general fund budget report ending October 31 indicates a surplus of general fund revenues of nearly 1.4 million, in excess of what was conservatively budgeted. Part of that is projects don't get completed, the monies aren't expended. $600,000 for Burke Park, that was going to be a grant, 50-50 match. We didn't get the grant, so we didn't spend that money, so there's $600,000 of that 1.4 million. So projects not getting done or completed, timed, weather, whatever, did not get a grant, whatever that might entail. From the previous council meeting of the budget, you'll see I've got a few notes in here. Added $5,000 from the proposed budget that was last presented to you, added $5,000 to the sidewalk replacement program. That was kind of the consensus of the council at that meeting. And then added $32,000 for necessary repair work on the bucket truck for the Public Works Department. It was an insurance claim. It cannot get done this year, so I've got a budget money for next year. That's the nature of the beast in today's world. And then some, some items that we've, we've talked about, we added an additional $250,000 to the police pension. We've done that for the last few years, and we're making great strides towards that pension fund, making it a little bit more palatable. There is that $750,000 for Grant Street and Buchanan Street resurfacing projects, and then, of course, the $6 million for Robert C. Burke Memorial Park and Freedom Park. Joining us tonight is Jeff Martin with Farnsworth Group, who's going to be, presented the master plans for those parks, and he's, they're, they're ready to hit the ground running for the engineering necessary, bid documents, so on and so forth, for those two park improvements. With all that being said, it's recommended City Council review the updated 2024 city budget and approved Resolution 2023-70 as presented.
Any questions of Terry? Comments?
Just so it can be heard, the $6 million for the two parks, you, you figured conservatively, you figured over what was bid to cover costs that pop up. Isn't that about right?
There, there's not, I mean, that's just, that, no, not a whole lot, we did not.
The initial bids that the letter, the emails talked about were just initial bids, they weren't actual numbers when we get down to different stuff, so they, they will fluctuate, they fluctuated already.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know exactly the numbers, where those came from, but I know previously the construction cost estimates were the only thing provided. Now we've got the professional services, engineering, bid documents, all of that, that was not included in the construction of those improvements of those parks.
And that's how we go, a couple million dollars more than what we initially heard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Rodney.
But you're totally fine.
And the centerpiece, if you will, for Freedom Park was not in that original cost. So that's some...
We didn't have a number for that at that point.
I think we were still kind of negotiating with the owner at that time, so that was a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And Terry, just asking for perhaps additional clarification for the question that, that was presented. So if the $6 million isn't all used for Burke and Freedom Parks, the, the city isn't just going to then say, hey, a raise for everyone now. That money just would not get used. I mean, I, I don't know the, the nature of the question, but it, it almost feels like there's a thought that funds would be misused somehow, and that's not how the city budget operates.
No, no, you, we would present something to the council, and the council as a whole would decide. Yeah, I don't, no, we wouldn't use it in any other fashion.
Yeah.
It's for those projects specifically.
So that's...
Doesn't, most of the time surplus goes back into surplus, right?
I mean, I don't think this is any different than anything else we've done, so I, I think I'm comfortable with that.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-70?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I need a roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well done getting all of this put together, Terry, I appreciate it. Older person's report, so let's start with Andrea. Nothing, that's fine. Ryan?
Um, nothing.
Thank you, Wendell Brock, for your service to our community, and congratulations on your retirement.
Got it down yet? Keep working at it, because when she retires, it changes again, so just be aware. Rodney?
I'm good, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
Wendell?
Only to come back with that comment, I do want to reach out to all of you, and thank you for those that reached out to me on my retirement. It didn't seem like 20 years. It took a long time to get there. Twenty years back to back, but it stacked and wound up at 20 at the end, and I am not used to it yet, so...
You will.
The Levi's in the morning are still somewhat unusual to me.
I always thought that any day, any day of work was not nearly as good as any day of retirement, so just, you know, keep...
I hope that it feels that way after a while, but thank you all very much for all your support.
Mike?
I just want to echo as well, I mean, this is 20 years, this is more than that. City and county. Congratulations, job well done.
Thank you, Mike.
We hope you enjoy retirement, and we hope to continue to see you at basketball and football games, because you do a great job on that.
Thank you.
Police chief's report, Rob?
Took us a while to get here, but I do want to introduce Dave Lansford. He is our lieutenant of patrol. He's been with us for a few months now. Do you want to talk about your background real quick?
Sure. I've been at the law enforcement for 30-plus years. Started out in Beaman, went to Duett County, worked my way up to being a sergeant over there, came back to Beaman for a while, my father fell ill, so I came back to help out with that, and got on with the Payette County Sheriff's Office. And Rob approached me with this opportunity, and I'm very happy to be here and be able to help him build my self-police department up, because we're low on people, so it's going to be fun getting new people in and training them and getting going. them and getting going. All the officers, this is one of them, that kind of helped facilitate my transition over. They're all great. I enjoyed every minute of working over here. It was a lot better than I even could have anticipated. So I want to thank you all for the opportunity, and I look forward to the many more years to come to help out, get things going.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, and thank you, too.
So with that, we have one in the academy, Officer Hart. He graduates on the 22nd. He'll have, I think, a day or two off, and then he gets thrown into the fire.
Who's training him?
McClutzy, Macon County.
Now, who's, when he comes back here, who's field?
It will be with, the three field training officers we have are Lieutenant Lansford, Officer Foreman, and Officer Griswold.
Very good. Thank you.
So we float them every few weeks.
Right, I understand.
And then I'm doing the background check on one, if Mulholland County would ever get ahold of me. And then beyond that, for the first time since I've been here, all of our full-time officers are completely up to date on training. Officer Griswold was the last one that completed his use of force training. That includes scenario-based training, de-escalation, amongst other things. We have a couple of part-timers that need to do that, but that's normal for, for part-time officers, and we have until 2025 to do that. Beyond that, I want to thank the Ministerial Association. We were finally able to meet up last Thursday. Had a good sit-down, from what I gather, fantastic soup. So that's a nice quarterly meeting we have. And then myself and Deputy Ross, the Piatt County School Resource Officer, will be up at the Monticello Schools Life Skills classes to celebrate the Christmas season with them. I think I am making reindeer food, according to the email, and Deputy Ross are making crafts Friday morning, so looking forward to that.
Thank you very much, Rob. Fire chief's report. Done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last month, in November, we had three nights of training. First night, we did ropes and knots. If you don't use ropes and knots that often, you need to do training every, at least every year, because it's hard to remember all that stuff. So we use that for, you know, tying off ladders, raising tools, things like that. So we try to practice that as much as we can. That night, we also had an officers' meeting and went over our different members and so forth. Second week, we had a gentleman from, actually, he was a firefighter from Lake Zurich, and he works with the Fire, Illinois Fire Service Institute. And we did training on all fire alarms, sprinklers, fire panels, and all sorts. About three hours of training, sponsored by the Illinois Fire Institute. Most, if, if it's not a medical call, most of our calls are fire alarms and to go to, and we actually did the training at the high school, where they have a big panel, and went through their different panels, and how to reset their alarms, you know, if a zone goes off, how to find the zone, and so forth. And we talked about different sprinkler systems and so forth. So it was very good training. Third week, we did our usual equipment, local maintenance, and taking care of our, our equipment. Some of, some miscellaneous events that we attended in November, we were at the Captain Cole Hunt, Captain Kowneke, and myself with the Monticello High School for Career Day. And we talked about career firemen and volunteer. So the students would listen to our spiel about the difference between a volunteer and a full-time fire department, and hopefully, maybe we can inspire some of them to be firefighters. We did a fire drill at the middle school on November 13th. Then November 13th also was our last council meeting. I was at, you guys approved firefighter Jason McLean, which I appreciate. That makes us at 21, which is the most we've ever had. We're approved for 22, so we still got one more spot. And we did get Casey Wooton, who you guys approved back in January, and two weeks after that, got deployed to Africa with the Air Force. Finally came back, so we got him back. So that's awesome. So now we got 21 firefighters that can come to all our calls. Then we attended the firefighter, Piatt County Firefighters Association meeting, which was on November 28th. We have those every other month, and that's all the different association members throughout Piatt County. We talk about different issues within the fire service. We ran 42 calls last month. Year to date, as of today, we're at about 75. So we're inching up near that 500 mark. Then on November 26th, we were, we had mutual aid, we had that fire on Lampard Lane. We sent the company out there, four firefighters from Monticello, was actually mid-Piatt's call, had a Monticello address, but it was actually mid-Piatt's call. And as you guys know, it had 13 different fire departments out there trying to put that thing out. And the rest of us, we sent the truck out with, with four members. The rest of us were in town filling water for all the trucks that were coming in, because it was out in the country, they had, they had no hydrants. We, we figured that we filled about 45 trucks to put that thing out, about well over 125,000 gallons of water. So, and we still couldn't get it out. Still burning the next day. So it's, the way that house was built, it was very difficult to get out. But it was very much a team effort amongst all the different departments of Piatt County to finally get that thing out. So that's it. Thank you.